It's the Richland Town Hall, live from the Richland Community Center. Learn about next year's budget, major projects, and how you can be involved in the decision-making It's Richland Town Hall.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Richland Community Center on a beautiful fall evening here in the Tri-Cities, as we are here tonight to review and the past of the past year in the city of Richland, as also look ahead at what 2019 will have on tap, particularly in the area of the budget and some of the strategic priorities here in the city of Richland. We call it a town hall, so we have people who are live here in the Richland Community Center, our studio for the evening. They're going to be having the opportunity later in the program to ask some questions of not only the city leaders, but some of our executive leadership team members, and you'll also be hearing from the mayor of Richland, as well as city manager Cindy Rents. Tonight's focus, we have a couple of different things we're going to try and accomplish this evening. We're going to learn about the 2019 proposed budget. It's currently in the process of being drafted and will be approved later on this year, before the end of the year, and the city manager will talk more about that. We'll also hear about some of the key projects planned for next year, the coming year of 2019. And again, as we mentioned at the top, we'll have the opportunity for our audience members here with us to ask some questions as well. So first, I'd like to introduce, we have the members of the city's executive leadership team with us tonight. So as I introduce you, I'd like you to please stand so we can recognize you. City manager Cindy Rents. Assistant city manager, John Amundson. Hi, John. The finance director is Brandon Allen. The community development director, Mr. Kerwin Jensen. Director of human resources, Allison Jubb. City attorney, Heather Kinsley. The director of public works, Pete Rigalski. The parks and public facilities director, Joe Schissel. The interim police services director, Jeff Taylor. And the director of Richland Energy Services, Clint Whitney. Thank you all for taking the time to be with us this evening. Probably have the opportunity to ask some questions of any one of those, depending upon the topic. But first, we're going to welcome to the microphone the mayor of the city of Richland, Mr. Bob Thompson. Bob?
Thank you, Jim. Tom, you out there in the audience? Would you like to stand up?
Tom Huntington.
Tom, what is it that you do?
Tom keeps us all safe from fires and emergency services.
He does a lot of stuff, but you can tell how knowledgeable he is. He does a great job for fire and saving people from problems that come out, especially from the EMT perspective. You know, it's always a pleasure to come in front of people and give them an opportunity to understand how the city of Richland works. And a lot of it has to do with our executive staff that got introduced a little earlier, with the exception of Tom, but now that we made a big point of that, now we know who he is. And I think it's important that we do a lot of studies that send out questionnaires about how we do in comparison to other people and what we could improve on. And Richland weighs amazingly high on customer satisfaction. I mean, the constituents seem to really appreciate what we do because we actually listen. We haven't made everybody happy over all the years, but that's kind of what decision-making is all about. And part of that decision-making is really the city council, because those are the individuals that set policy for the city of Richland to allow staff to execute. With that, could I have my city councilman stand up here this evening? Phil, could you stand up? Ryan, could you stand up? Terry? Sandra? Michael? You know, these are the people that frankly take the tough shots from the community. Go ahead and sit back down, enough of you guys. Think about it. These are the guys that when something goes wrong, that's who your community goes out and asks questions of or complains to. And depending on the issue, these are the guys that are on that front line, addressing those questions, fielding them, and it helps shape future policy, right? I mean, that's kind of what we're all about. I got a lot of different hats in my life. I've been able to be an attorney and a city councilman and had been on some national boards. And my reflection on the city of Richland is basically my childhood. City of Richland was a very unique place in 1955 through, all the time till 74, when I graduated high school. And it was the most egalitarian community that I'd ever been to. And if you get out in the world, egalitarian means that everybody's opinion is treated the same way. There aren't, there is no class. You're not held to be superior based on your education, your background, and your, basically your economic worth. Everybody was held accountable in my community when I grew up. And I like to think that's still the same community we have today. Because I'll tell you what, when we make a decision, we have more people who are educated and are concerned citizens that want us to do the right thing, and they trust me, not only do they second guess, they're able to provide some information to us that may actually change policy. Because God knows, we're just, there's seven of us that are in city councils, and we get it right, we think most of the time. But mainly that's because we listen to the citizens, we listen to our staff, and then we have different groups that provide assistance to us. And those are, you know, commissions and board members, like the Parks Commission, the energy folks, that actually help us make great policy to keep us going down the right track. And I want to thank all the citizens of Richland, not just those of us because we're supposed to say that kind of stuff. But if you look around the communities that you have, where would you rather live? Think about that. You're safe, your disposable income is high, people are moving in the right direction, your schools provide a quality education. This doesn't happen by accident. Sometimes I think, don't think about all the moving pieces that it takes to actually make it come together and actually work. Richland is a very unique community based on where it came from and where it's going. Part of that is, when you're going somewhere, you've got to create a budget, which is kind of why we're here this evening. A number of years ago, council got together and created seven keys, six keys, the idea of where we wanted to go as a visioning project. And there was some disagreements from council. But having said that, we have all centered on those, I'm going to read them to you just because it gives you an idea of a framework that you'll understand how our budget comes together. And why, when the city of Richland does something, it's in line with those different goals. I'm going to tell you about right now. I think that's very important for citizens to get an understanding of. You hired city council to set policy, and those policymakers have created our goals. And the budget reflects those goals and how we move towards them. I know Cindy will talk about that a little bit. I mean, I can go on about our accomplishments, but I don't think you want to hear from me. I want to have Cindy be able to talk about that kind of stuff. So just real quick. We've got the six core focus areas when we create a budget. Promote financial stability and operational effectiveness. Manage and maintain infrastructure and facilities. Increase economic vitality. Manage our natural resources. Maximize community amenities. And enhance neighborhoods and community safety. Now Cindy's going to come up and talk about how this budget actually moves us along those lines. But when you think of those different core principles, they're not always in balance, okay? And what I mean by there are competing interests when you talk about those. And the decision that council gets to make is how we balance those interests for the benefit of the community. And I think that Richland's been very blessed because we've got a lot of really educated people in the city of Richland, provide great guidance to council, and we have some pretty educated people on council, and we have the tendency to get it right. Again, all you have to do is go around the different communities in the state of Washington, or even in the Tri-Cities, and figure out whether we got it right. Cindy, I'm going to give it over to you. Tell us about some of the accomplishments and where we're going. Thank you.
Well, while Cindy is doing that, I'm going to tax Bob's 1974 memory. This place has changed a lot physically since 1974, not the way Bob described in just the culture of we have. So before I bring up Cindy, throughout the program, we want to kind of share with you some of the information of how this community has grown in some of the various service areas here in the Tri-Cities, and in particular in Richland. The first one, it's not up on the screen, but I have to ask it, it's a question, who is the director of Fire and Emergency Services? Tom Huntington. Yes, Tom. He's the most famous Fire and Emergency Services director there is. Good to see you, Tom. Now we will go to our screen. What is the estimated population of Richland today? Anybody? Just shout out a guess. Quickly.
Fifty-six thousand.
You've been reading something. Your Fire and Emergency Services director was very close, fifty-six thousand, five-hundred-nine, and as you see on the screen, in 2010, it was forty-eight thousand. What is the median age of Richland residents? Thirty, thirty-eight, or fifty-seven? Thirty-eight. You're correct, sir and ma'am. What is our average commute time in the city of Richland? Fifteen? Two hours? Depends on where you live, of course. Nineteen minutes. And as you see in the parentheses, the bridge that is going up, the Dupertail Bridge, will certainly hopefully help all of that. The city of Richland resurfaced how many miles of streets this year, 2018? Any guesses? Seventeen point five miles. That's six point six miles more than last year. How many people attended events at the Happel Community Stage at John Dam Plaza this past The answer, forty-two thousand, five-hundred, and that's spread out over 25 events. So that's, that's great attendance on average for those events. And finally, before we go to our city manager, in 2017, the city of Richland Community Development Services Department issued how many building permits? Hire councilman, two thousand, three hundred thirty-one, and that brings a value of $212 million. So with that, we'll bring back some more facts a little bit later, but now I'd like to introduce the city manager of the city of Richland, Cindy Rents. She's going to talk a little bit more about these strategic priorities that the mayor talked about and prelude the budget that's going to be happening, that the council will be drafting by the end of the year. Cindy?
Thank you, Jim. And also thank you, Mayor Thompson. I am pleased to be here with you this evening. I know the budget can be a little bit of a dry subject, but those statistics and those fun facts that we just talked about, I think that just brings into focus some of the things that we do here that normally we just don't think about. Miles paved, population. I think most people would not have thought that our median age was as low as it is. I hear on a regular basis that it's much higher, but it's actually not. So we're changing. We're changing in Richland. So again, I appreciate the mayor speaking about the importance of our strategic leadership plan and the six core focus areas. Before we watch the video that we put together regarding the 2019 budget and priorities, I'd like to reflect a moment on the accomplishments of the past year and how they align with the strategic plan. So under promoting financial stability and operational effectiveness, staff launched plans to replace the Enterprise Resource Planning software, which is affectionately known as our financial backbone of our city accounting management program. Pretty much takes care of everything we do, from payroll to asset management and everything in between. Manage infrastructure and facilities. We progress continued after breaking ground on the new city hall and the Dupertail Bridge. Queensgate Drive corridor improvements were completed and expanded pavement preservation efforts were accomplished. And under increased economic vitality, we saw continued expansion of businesses at Horn Rapids Industrial Park, including the expansion of preferred freezer, currently in process, on 150,000 square foot freezer expansion. Managing our natural resources, after a fire force closure of Bateman Island in 2017, staff collaborated with the Army Corps of Engineers to remediate and reopen this much-loved recreational area. Shoreline improvements continued along the Columbia River shoreline near Howard Amon Park. And to maximize our community amenities, thanks to grant funding and private donations, the Columbia Playfield basketball course received a much-needed upgrade and expansion. Phase one of the riverfront trail upgrades and expansion were completed at Howard Amon Park as well. Under enhancing our neighborhoods and community safety, the Southeast Communications Center, known as CCOM, that's our emergency dispatch center, merged with Benton County Emergency Services, which we call BCS, began providing services to Franklin County and Pasco, fielding all mid-Columbia emergency calls in August. Now Franklin County and Pasco are large, but the contracts that they had were even larger, like Walla Walla Five, the airport, I'm probably missing some other things, so it's quite a large, large effort, and it took a lot of years to get there, something we're quite proud of. The Public Safety Sales Tax, better known as PSST, allowed for safety improvements and additional public safety staff throughout the city, including the Metro Drug Task Force and the Southeast Washington Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, we call ICAC. So these significant accomplishments include several large efforts that will continue to progress into 2019 and will positively impact the future of our city for generations to come. So I think we're going to cut to the video now. Great things are happening in Richland. The city's strategic leadership plan and council priorities guide the work that we do. This is shown in changes on all corners of our city, from Horn Rapids Industrial Park to the north, to Gage Boulevard in the south, the waterfront in Columbia Point to the east, and the Queensgate area to the west. At the core of our city, Central Richland provides strength, energy, and connectivity to all areas of our community. In addition, there are those priorities that encompass the entire community and have a significant impact citywide. Hi, I'm Cindy Rents, Richland City Manager, and welcome to the overview of our 2019 city In 2018, the city of Richland went through an extensive strategic planning process. The strategic leadership plan's six core focus areas was adopted by council in July of 2018. This was a result of a collaborative effort of the city council and staff with assistance of a reputable consultant. Our strategic leadership plan sets forth the city's goals, aligns work across projects and departments, and serves as a guide in developing our annual budget. The city's strategic leadership plan organizes our goals into six core focus areas. All of the projects we plan, as well as the services we provide, tie back to one or more of these areas. Council and staff are committed to advancing our city through utilization of new technology, providing high-quality, reliable services at the lowest reasonable cost, supporting economic growth, encouraging community engagement, and providing robust community amenities, increasing safety and enhancing prevention activities, and protecting citizens' exceptional quality of life. In 2019, there are no rate increases planned for water, sewer, or stormwater utilities. The city does anticipate a utility rate increase brought forward to council for consideration impacting the recycling service within the solid waste utility. This rate increase is driven by the increased cost of material processing passed to the city from the regional recycled material industry. The electric utility forecasted the need for a rate increase in early 2020, and data from the cost service analysis will be presented to the utility advisory committee later this year. The city anticipates the utility advisory committee will make a formal recommendation to council in early 2019. No property tax increase is assumed other than amounts attributed to new construction and annexations, increases of state-assessed property, and refunds. The allowable 1% of property tax is not included and instead is recommended for future consideration. In 2019, the city of Richland will continue to make substantial investments in our future. Priority efforts will have an impact on all areas of our city. Interest in the Horn Rapids Business Center, Industrial Park, and Commercial Center has increased and is expected to remain strong through 2019. As of September 2018, nine land sales have been approved totaling 62 acres. This provided a total revenue of nearly $4 million. Packaging Corporation of America will soon close on a 42-acre parcel, and plans will move forward to build a state-of-the-art corrugated transport packaging facility. The increased arrival of large manufacturing occurring in the industrial area is attracting other reputable businesses and industries such as the Coleman Oil Distribution Center that will be built in early 2019. Construction will begin on phase one of the Horn Rapids landfill expansion. This will address long-term disposal capacity that will serve the city for the next several decades. Our neighborhoods will also see some investments. McMurray Park is a popular neighborhood park located in North Richland. With multifamily housing located just adjacent, plans to install a multipurpose sports court will address the demand for additional recreational amenities in this area. In the same area, crews will look at increasing pedestrian safety by adding a rapid flashing beacon at the crosswalk and restriping the complex intersection of McMurray and Everest. We are proud Horn Rapids Athletic Complex is quickly becoming a premier softball facility. In-field and spectator seating improvements are imperative to allow the facility to operate and serve users. In addition, storage for temporary fencing and portable pitching mounts is planned. The city will be absorbing 121 homes into the city service area through annexation. The homes are located in the Lorraine J neighborhood along South Leslie Road. Design and permitting work will be advanced for projects that will add features to Columbia Park Trail that protect the Columbia River from stormwater-delivered pollution. With the completion of the Leslie Road substation, we will install new underground electrical infrastructure from the substation to support growth and reliability. A long-range planning study will consider design options for improving the pedestrian connectivity and comfort in downtown between the commercial properties and Howard Amon Park on our waterfront. Park enhancements to our most popular parks, such as Howard Amon, John Dam, and Leslie Groves, are expected in 2019. Riverfront trail widening, beach stabilization, safety lighting, and a shade structure installation, as well as swim beach upgrades are just a few of the planned improvements. Columbia Point Marina Park is also a top-rated destination and continues to see consistent growth in visitors and usage. Plans for improvement in 2019 include replacing a sewer lift station, aging playground equipment, and launching a study to widen the popular marina opening. Located in the heart of Columbia Point and central to several restaurants, this amenity will continue to warrant future investment. Construction on phase one of the Dupertail Bridge will continue. Citizens will see substantial progress on their structure as it spans the Yakama River throughout the coming year. In addition, crews will begin efforts on phase two, which includes improvements to the Dupertail SR248 intersection. Initiation of a master planning effort for the 30-acre park in Badger Mountain South will begin. Planning for this park is a requirement of the development agreement and is moving forward due to the continued growth in the area. The increasingly popular Badger Mountain Centennial Preserve, managed by Benton County, is accessed by most visitors through the city-owned Trailhead Park. Plans are in place to replace the steep basalt steps accessing the trail. In addition, a missing portion of the 11-mile-long trail will be developed on Little Badger Mountain, allowing for increased connectivity for hikers along the ridge line. Badger Mountain Park is a regional park and includes several popular tourist amenities, including a dog park and splash pad. In 2019, plans are underway to pave and install parking lot lighting on the first half of the gravel parking lot. We will also see drainage improvements in the dog park and updates to landscaping in the Keane Road parking lot. By the spring of 2019, construction on the new city hall will be complete. Staff will transition to the new facility and prepare the aging existing city hall for demolition and future economic development. Swift corridor improvements will be completed in tandem with city hall completion and in partnership with Benton County through our rural county capital funds. Reservicing efforts on George Washington Way will be a major effort from Guyer to Horn Rapids Road. This resservicing project will be supplemented with work to improve traffic signals, sidewalks, and roadside landscaping at key spots along the street. It will also present an opportunity to adjust the striping along George Washington Way to support bicycle lanes, particularly on the more northern segments. Specific plans will be developed in the spring. Plans for replacement of electrical meters with advanced metering infrastructure for operational effectiveness and functionality will be further developed. Richland will proceed in partnership with Kennewick, Pasco, and Visit Tri-Cities for a regional sports tourism study. And the city of Richland is also partnering with Visit Tri-Cities in a coordinated regional effort to enhance wave finding throughout the Tri-Cities. Richland will construct and install wave-finding signs and entrance features within the city limits. Park and neighborhood safety is important to us, and we continually work towards enhancing safety features to public recreation facilities and public streets, affirming our commitment to public safety. Improvements to our current compost operations will allow for a more time and cost-effective The city is actively defending a federal case filed by the Tri-City Railroad Company, wherein the railroad asserts numerous claims against the city of Richland and the port of Benton. The city expects the legal fees associated with defense of this complicated case to be significant. Part of those dollars are already included in the proposed 2019 budget, but in the event additional funds are necessary, additional appropriations from reserves will need to be made. In August of 2014, voters in Benton County approved a county-wide increase of 3/10 of a percent to the sales and use tax for public safety. This tax, known as the Public Safety Sales Tax, has generated a lot of discussion in our community this year, potentially jeopardizing the confidence of our voters. In Richland, this tax provides funding for the Metro Drug Task Force, our local Internet Crimes Against Children office, many programs and equipment that keep our communities safe, as well as 12.65 public safety full-time employees. This is an exciting time in Richland. Our community continues to grow. With this comes opportunities and challenges. The city of Richland is committed to pursuing opportunities for economic growth and development, enhancements in safety and community connectivity, providing robust community amenities, encouraging community engagement, and protecting our citizens' exceptional quality of life. We are also committed to facing challenges as they arise. Adopting our annual budget is the most important responsibility we fulfill each year. Our city provides a wide range of services that impact the daily lives of our citizens. These services depend on adoption of a responsible, balanced budget that adequately funds city services and meets the needs of our diverse community. I am confident the budget I am proposing does just that. It meets our community needs while ensuring the responsible stewardship of the public's resources. Lastly, I wish to express thanks to the city's employees for their hard work and dedication to public service, and to the city council for their leadership, commitment to local government, and partnership with staff and the citizens. This process proves great things happen when we work together for the greater good.
And it has indeed been a busy 2018, and everyone, of course, is looking forward to the coming year and see all those projects come to fruition in 2019. Thank you, Cindy. We'll hear from you a little bit later before we leave the program tonight. We do want to provide you some more interesting information about the city that has happened in this past year. Our next question, let's go back to the screen. The Richland Library offers a variety of programs from STEAM activities, virtual reality demonstrations, book clubs, and more. How many people attended library programs in 2017? The answer, 37,800 attended library programs, and that puts the attendance per capita at about 700. The average for libraries of the Richland size is 390, so a very popular library here in Richland. How many calls for service did CCOM receive in 2017? And that is Southeast Communication, the Emergency Dispatch Center, I believe that's what that is. That number is? 272,000. And those numbers will certainly increase by estimated about 100,000 more annually as a result of the addition of Franklin County's dispatch system. How many utility bills did the city distribute in 2017? How about 345,000 plus? How many pieces of equipment does our equipment maintenance division maintain? This is a multiple choice question. 52, 287, or 508? Wow, 508. How many states were represented at the 2018 GeoCoin Challenge Event? The answer, 11, plus three additional countries, the U.S., Canada, and Austria. And finally, how many tons of recycled material were processed from the curbside recycling program in 2017? That would be 1,150 tons, a cost of about $125,000-plus. And the costs are due to the international influences, as we heard in the video, of recycled materials due to processing and value. So a lot of activity happening certainly throughout the city in a variety of areas, many of them that we probably, as citizens, don't necessarily readily think of, but certainly it's very important work. And speaking of important work, it's the person in charge of developing this budget and doing all the numbers crunching, and that is the director of finance for the city of Richland. And we're going to have Brandon Allen give us a little overview of the 2019 budget.
What do you love most about your city? Good parks? Safe streets? Clean water? Ever wonder who pays for those services? Well, it's all of us. That's right. We're the taxpayers, and we pay for those services when you live or shop in a city. These same taxes also go to your schools, the county, the state. In fact, your city only gets a small portion of the property and sales tax collected within its limits. City revenues go to the operating budget, where the council funds things like police and fire, parks and recreation, planning, streets and sidewalks. These services aren't cheap. Police and fire alone can take up half the city budget. What about the city utility systems like water and sewer? Who pays for that? Customers. Their money goes to that service, and it can't be used for anything else, like a new park that residents want. And in case you were thinking that the state and federal government pays for some of those And in case you were thinking that the state and federal government pays for some of those services, well, there's not much money there. Their support of cities has dwindled. Overall, city revenues may increase in strong economic times, but they also decrease when things aren't so good. During the downturn, cities work to minimize impacts on the public, but that creates challenges even when the economy recovers and especially when population grows. Cities are also working to enhance the services residents want, like faster public safety response time, reduced traffic, and better parks. This poses a budget problem today and into the future. Vibrant cities need reliable and stable revenue. We all need to work together to ensure that we can fund the many things we love about
We're going to go ahead and get started. I think you guys have heard several times tonight reference to the strategic plan of the city, and that looks out a ways out into the future and kind of points the direction we want to go. The budget is our annual chance to try to stay on that path, and so we look at our strategic plan, looking at, and we say, what do we need to do in the next year to make that happen? What do we have coming in, what do we have going out? And so, if you look, I believe on our, we have some slides, I'm talking about the funds of the city. The city has roughly 43 funds, a little over 40 funds that we manage. They go from our general fund all the way through all our utilities. The biggest group of funds we have here, you'll notice, is the governmental funds. That includes the general fund, which is the biggest fund in that area, and the things you're used to seeing and thinking about with the city, such as police and fire, library, parks, that's where that activity happens in the general fund. And as part of the general fund, the police and fire are roughly about 40% of that, and so a big chunk of that general fund is our public safety. You also see that we have special revenue funds. Special revenue funds are a small, a special fund, obviously, that has a revenue that's specified to a certain activity. Those will be like our public safety sales tax that Cindy referred to. We have a specific revenue that comes in, that only can be spent for certain types of activities, and we track it in those funds. Other ones would be our hotel motel tax, our home program, city streets, those such programs. You also see on there we have what we call debt service funds. Those funds are where we hold the money to pay the bonds and the other debts to the city as they come up. Typically, we are paying those throughout the year, usually the middle of the year, and then we have a second set of payments, November, December, so that money is held there to make sure we can meet all the obligations of the city. Capital project funds is where we keep the money for capital projects, for the bridge, for our city hall, for the projects you see going on around town. They are kept and managed in those funds separately. And those are our major governmental funds, and that's what the city runs on the most part. You'll see what we have also on here is enterprise funds. That's typically our utilities, the golf course, our medical services, ambulance utilities. These funds operate more like what you expect to see a normal business would operate. They kind of their own little businesses, and they have their own revenues, they have their own expenses. The revenues that come in to those utility funds cannot be used for other purposes of the city, so electric utility charges can't be taken and used to build a park. So we have a lot of rules on the revenues that we have and where we can put them and where we can use them for. It's an interesting thing to track, and this is how we do, this is how we take care of it. So that's our enterprise funds, and there's a fair amount of activity in those funds. Internal service funds is what we use to kind of help the city run. We have our fleet. You saw the reference to how many pieces of equipment we use. That's all included in our equipment replacement fund, and we manage that and through those funds. Anytime we're doing services for ourselves, we do that through an internal service fund. And then lastly, there's our trust and agency funds, and this is typically where we are holding money for someone else. We're kind of a pass-through, where we hold the funds and we pay the funds out, but we don't actually own those. And we don't have a lot of those, but an example of that would be our pension funds for fire and police. So that's our funds, that's how we manage and kind of keep track of what's coming in and out of the city. These are, the state requires us to have a lot of these ones, you try to keep them to a minimum. General funds are always required for any city. You only can have one, but you have to have one. And then, as we need them, we will create and reduce funds. And so, you'll also notice that there's, because we have a lot of funds and a lot of expenses, we have to have a lot of revenues come into the city. The next slide here will show a breakdown of one of those. Our largest revenue in the city is what we call charges for services, and that's typically, and most of those are like utilities, or water utility, those fees you pay for the utilities and energy, that's a big bulk of that, and again, those are kept within those funds and spent out of those funds. The second-largest revenue we have is taxes, and that's, the bulk of that goes into the general fund and is used in those areas. Property tax is the largest within that group. Sales tax is the second, the utility tax is the third largest. Those are our big three, we call them. It's about 98% of the taxes that come into the general fund are those three taxes. With property taxes, you can see from the slide that it doesn't all go to the city. The county will assess your property values, see that once a year, and based on those property evaluations, that determines what your tax will be on the property tax, and then it comes into the county, and the county distributes it. The bulk of this, you can see, goes to the school district, about 41 cents on the dollar. The state receives some, the city, the county, and then down to some small miscellaneous ones. With property taxes, and you may have all noticed this year that, at least I did, that there was a pretty good jump in assessed values this year, and it was across the board in the county. And just because our assessed values goes up doesn't mean that we're going to pay more in property tax every time. What we don't have up here, and we talked about this Tuesday in council, is our, what we call our levy rate, dropped significantly as well. So we went from 2.67 per thousand to 2.42, $2.42, which is a pretty significant drop for us. And so, when you see an across-the-board increase in your evaluation, if the rates go down, you don't, you're typically spending about the same amount in taxes. So our amount we get in doesn't go up just because the assessed value goes up on the property. So we end up with about 25 cents on the dollar that the city gets from property taxes, and that goes into the general fund for the most part. By law, the city is allowed to increase property taxes by 1% a year, and that's the cap the state sets. The city of Richland, over the last 10 years, has chosen not to exercise that ability to increase 1%. We have what we call banked it, so that if there's an emergency in the future, we have some access to increase our property taxes if we need to meet that need, and we have not had to do that at this point. It's been, we've been in a good shape and haven't had to do that now. A lot of the entities and other places around town like Kennewick and Pasco and household districts and that, they typically, as a practice, take that 1% every year, and so there may be a time when we need to do that. We always look at that every year and analyze our costs and what we need to be providing as services and decide if we need to do that or not every year. That's an annual thing. Sales tax, on the next slide, you'll see our sales tax breakdown. Again, I think everybody's aware that our sales tax in there is 8.6%. The bulk of that is the state at 6.5. The city of Richland gets 0.85% of the sales tax, which equates to, if you spend a dollar, we get eight, eight and a half tenths of a cent, so that's less than a penny per dollar spent. So we don't get a, we don't get a ton of from the sales tax, we get a piece of that that comes to the city. And that, again, goes into our general fund, we use that to provide services, and it's about 10% of the tax you pay, the city benefits from that. And then also on this slide, you'll notice there's the amount for public safety sales tax, and the city receives some of that. The county receives 60%, and then the 40%, the other 40% is distributed to the cities based on population, so we do receive a little bit of that as well. And Cindy spoke about that in the video and how we spend that and what we use that to provide services for. And then finally, the utility tax, there's not a lot to say about that. What that is typically is we just, we charge utilities a tax to operate within the city. The bulk of the utilities offered in the city are offered by Richland. We have our own electric utility, water utility, stormwater, and so we tax our own utilities, and that comes into the general fund as a tax. But any, any external utility provider would also be receiving that tax as well. So the question is, what's, I guess what's next? We go, we do the budget from about May to November, takes us almost a good chunk of the year to do that. And if you want to find the budget, where is that at? You'll notice on this slide here, and it's, I know no one can read this, I can't read it from here even either, but if you look on the top, there's an area where you can click on, the departments, administrative services, and a slide over to finance. When you get in there, you'll see there's a bunch of reports in there. One of them is the CIP, the budget, and other reports. If you click in there, you can see the budgets that we have, and back to 2013, and any other reports that finance may be putting out at that time. So that's where you find the budget. The preliminary budget is currently out there for 19, and then the 19 when it's final will be put out there as well. The budget is typically what we plan to do. So we put together a budget, say, here's what we want to do. We have something that's called a CAFR, which is our Comprehensive Annual Finance Report. That tells you the story of what we did do. That's audited by, that's audited by the state auditor, and so if you go out there in that same area, you'll see those reports as well. The budget has a lot of information in it. If you want to know what the city is doing, if you want to know how, what kind of, what revenues are which and how it works, the budget's got a lot of information on there that you can go to and read through, and there's a lot of questions answered there. So I recommend everyone go out and read that. It's exciting. For me, Cindy said that it was kind of a boring thing, it kind of hurt me, but, but I think the budget's really exciting. And so I would encourage everyone to go out and see what the city is doing and what we're providing for you. And I'll turn that time back over to Jim.
Thank you, Brandon. That's really interesting to see, and I, the one that, the thing that strikes me is the restriction on where a lot of those dollars are going, that you, they cannot be utilized beyond, in many cases, what their intended use is for. It is now time to, we have a few minutes left in our program where we can put some questions to members of our executive leadership team, and a lot of different topics, as we have heard tonight in the video and the presentations, a lot of different projects happening throughout the city for the coming year, and we have the opportunity, I guess, anybody here in the audience, if you have any questions, just raise your hand, and either I will come find you or Gail will come find you with a microphone, and we will get to your questions all the time that we have for questions. We do have some that have already been submitted, and we're going to begin with Joe Schissel. And the question is, what is being done to address the need for more sports and athletic fields in the city of Richland?
Thanks, Jim. Well, of course, tourism is a big part of our economic development strategy, and sports tourism is part of that, and we have a lot of wonderful events at the Columbia Playfields and the video mentioned Horn Rapids Athletic Complex, and we see that industry growing. And of course, we're competing with our neighboring cities too, in Spokane and Yakima that are lobbying pretty heavy for tournaments to occur in their cities. So Visit Tri-Cities is our area tourism organization, and they're organizing a regional study to look at sports tourism and what the city can do, what all the cities can do in our area, to capture more of that market share. They will be launching that study in the early spring, and there will be opportunities for public to comment on that as well. We're also updating our six-year park plan, and we'll be reaching out to the community in various open house kinds of forums, and we'll be looking for feedback on that as well.
A follow-up to that, in addition to the tournaments that you're seeking, whether there are people coming from outside the Tri-Cities, but what about the people who live in the city of Richland? Are there enough softball fields, baseball fields, just park areas? Do you hear that from citizens?
We do. We, you know, we have professionals that work in our organization and study that kind of thing. We also have some anecdotal information, and of course, our six-year plan will answer that question, but the answer is yes, there are shortages in some areas, and for example, the sport of lacrosse is growing very quickly. It's, lacrosse is what soccer was 20 years ago, and we're working on that.
That's great. It's certainly amazing to just, wherever you drive around Richland, whether it's a Little League field, a Little League football field, or the water parks out in South Richland, it's pretty impressive to see. They are, and it's a good thing that they're very busy. Thanks, Joe. Any questions before I go over to more of my pre-submitted questions? All right, my next tough question, this is for Mr. Rogalski. How does the city decide what roads need to be fixed with repaving or overlay?
Thank you, Jim. We have a, we have a tool called StreetSaver, and what that, what we do with that tool is we align the available budget with the needs of the system. So that StreetSaver includes a score, a numeric score, for each street in the city that tells us its condition. We have four, we have five or six different available treatments to us to resurface a street, and those vary in cost and vary in longevity of their service and their effectiveness in rehabilitating a street at a certain condition. And we use, and we use this database program to align the two, to align the right treatment with the right score of the, of the, of the street, all within the constraints of the money that we have available.
So a very busy job, I can imagine. One quick question, Pete, on, on the Swift project, because I happen to work in that area along Swift, and it's a very busy area, and I know you have some work that's going to be happening later this year and then on into next year along Swift Boulevard in front of the hospital.
Yes, we do. We're pretty excited about that. I mean, the city hall building is very visible for people to see an exciting change in downtown. Us in Public Works, we're road and concrete guys, and we get excited about, Brandon gets excited about budgets, and we get excited about asphalt. And so, but we're broadening our horizons, and sometimes now we're putting trees and fancy lights on streets as well. And so, what you're going to see in Swift by the time the new city hall opens is some new lane configurations, it's going to be more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly, there'll be some landscape treatments to make it look like a comfortable place to walk, and what, and what that does is sort of advance the city's vision of downtown being a friendly, enjoyable place to work and eat and walk and recreate. And so, all this visioning is played out in several different, in several different ways, and we're hoping that the improvements to Swift Boulevard contribute to that.
Thank you very much, Pete. Any questions? Back to my list. This is to Jeff and Tom, our Richland Fire and Emergency Services Director. Have you guys come up? This one has to do with the public safety sales tax. It was alluded to a little bit in our program earlier, but what are some of the programs or projects that you see these funds being utilized for now and into the future?
That's a big question. How much time do we have? Because I could probably go for quite a while on that, so. Beyond just putting boots on the ground, which is probably the easy answer, we've really looked at utilizing those funds to make the city safer and to make the community as a whole safer. One of the big things that we've done as far as community is to create the Southeast Regional Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, which Cindy alluded to earlier, and that's a joint, combined effort between the Richland Police Department, Kennewick Police Department, Benton County Sheriff's Department, and Homeland Security Investigations. And the whole purpose of that team is to actually go out and try and catch offenders who are out abusing the children in our community, and actually catch them before they abuse and identify them, arrest them, prosecute them, and put them in a place where they can actually create victims in our community. We've been extremely successful in that effort, and it's something that this community should be really proud of. We're really, other than in Seattle, the only task force in the state that's operating and doing this kind of work. And to date, we've arrested over 70 offenders, we've identified over 60 victims, and we've identified over 40 children who were in a position of being at risk to be abused, so it's something that I'm really proud of and the community should be really proud of. Like I said, this could be a long answer. So, beyond that, some of the other things we've done with the money, we've created an economics crime officer who is out there working directly with our businesses, and he works a lot of fraud and organized retail theft investigations, and works directly with our business community to try and mitigate that financial and economic loss that we see with financial crimes. And another thing that we've done is created a civilian community services officer who, she does a lot of presentations with screenshot series in connection with our Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, out there actually giving presentations to the public on how they can keep their children safe on the internet. She works with our landlords and helping to educate the landlords on keeping their property safe. She does a lot with our homeowners associations and neighborhood watch programs, and works a lot with just community outreach and our social media. So her position is completely funded through the Criminal Justice Sales Tax. Did you want to address?
Yeah, I think one of the key things that has benefited both of us in terms of this funding source is the mobile data computers that are in the cabs of all the emergency response vehicles in Richland. And this allows us to have a very rapid information exchange with our emergency dispatchers, communicate with one another, and really be more efficient out in the street responding to 911 calls. One of the things that I think we're both very, very proud of is the One of the things that I think we're both very, very proud of is the united front, the team effort that we have in terms of public safety in this community. There's often tension between police and fire in different communities, and we have a very, very strong public safety team here in the city, and we're very proud of that, and we hope the community is proud of that as well.
All right, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Our next question has to do with utility rates, and I guess we'll have Clint join, grab the microphone. The question, simple one, what factors contribute to increases in utility rates? Clint?
Might be a simple question, but it's a, it's a complex problem to solve. And for utility rates, we use a cost-of-service model, and with inputs of revenue as well as costs of, outputs of expenses. And so, the model is a multi-year model, and one of our largest expenses that feeds into the, to our cost of service to help us determine a forward rate program is our wholesale power costs. Wholesale power is currently purchased from Bonneville Power Administration, and it accounts for almost 60% of our costs for the utility. And our second largest cost for the utility is our investment in our capital improvement plan. And that's our reinvestment in our infrastructure. It's one of our second core focus areas for the, for the city. And that 13% reinvestment in our infrastructure is what we utilize to help reduce outages and prolong our infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, and certainly it's something we take for granted, that when we, we come home, that the light turns on, and the power's on, and the hot water's hot. And so, thank you for sharing that information with us. Any other questions from members of our audience? Seeing none? Yes? Yes. Go ahead, go ahead. Yes, you do, for our audience at home, so they can listen, and our audience here as well.
So, actually, my question is for Brandon. You had mentioned that we have a property sales tax here in Richland, the possibility to increase it 1% a year. And, but you, that Richland has chosen not to do that, but has banked it. So, my question is, how, how much percentage is banked? And what are the benefits, or what is the strategic thought behind that of whether or not, it seems like a property tax of 1% perhaps could create preventative programs or just additional, I'm going to say, fund for the city versus banking it for an emergency? So, I'm just kind of curious, one, how much percentage is banked that could be utilized at one time, and two, what is the strategic thought behind that?
Yeah, so, we have not, taken the 1% since 2009, so it's, we've got about 10 years there, and so, it's roughly 9 or 10% worth of bank capacity. We, there is a thought that the 1% can help us stay up with inflation, and that, I think that's probably usually the explanation, the reasoning for most cities to do it. We, in the past, and we go through our budget, and we look at what we have, we want to provide that this year, what services are out there, what services need to be enhanced, and then we look at the revenues coming in, and we decide, do we need to find more revenue sources? In the past, we have not felt the need to grab that 1%. We didn't think, we felt we could provide the services that were needed without it. The reason we bank it is for any kind of emergency that may happen. We don't necessarily know or have any plans, strategic plans, to dip into that bank anytime soon or ever necessarily. And we will be looking at that this year, again, as we always do, to say, are we at the point now where inflation and ongoing costs are rising at a rate that we need to look at taking that 1%? But you're right, it is something we look at every year, that it may be something that allows us to provide more services or expanded services.
Thank you for that question. Any more before we adjourn? Well, thank you to the members of the executive leadership team for being with us tonight and the work that you do throughout the year, and your teams pass along that work. Our thanks on behalf of the city to all of the employees. And before we adjourn, we're going to ask City Manager Cindy Rents to deliver some concluding remarks for our evening. Cindy?
Thanks, Jim. Brendan, I did not say it was boring, so it was dry. But what is exciting about those numbers is when those numbers turn into something fantastic. And I hope you've learned tonight about all the things the City of Richland is doing to make our community fantastic. I enjoy it so much when our department heads can get up here and be excited about the work that they do. And I think all the men and women that work for the City of Richland know that they are creating community, and I see a lot of them here tonight, and thank you for your service. It's, it's a joy to see you work and to be able to, to be a part of that team. There are so many things that you heard about tonight, but there are a lot of departments that are support departments. We have attorney, we have HR, we have finance, although Brendan spoke a lot. But we have a lot of services. We have IT. We have different things that support all the work that you heard about here tonight. And we don't hear from them a lot, we don't see them out in the community a lot, but they are the unsung heroes, and so, I want to thank them as well for all of your work. So, thank you. The intended next steps for the 2019 budget are a public hearing and first reading of the budget. It's the acceptance ordinance during the city council meeting scheduled for November 6th. The second reading to approve the budget ordinance is scheduled for November 20th. These goals are dependent on the council's approval of the budget. Remember, we always encourage public involvement. Thank you for your questions tonight and those that were called in. We appreciate that. Residents and corporate citizens are encouraged to participate by knowing the budget and making comments. The more you know, the better off we are as a community. If you have questions, please ask. We are more than happy to, to answer to the best of our ability. These guys and women, they love talking about what they do. Copies of the proposed budget document are available at the Richland City Clerk's Office and online, as Brandon said earlier. The budget is made available to the public through open meetings such as this, by televised regular council meetings, and on the city's website. This town hall is another way for citizen involvement. The more you know about our budget, its processes and choices we make, the better it is for you and the city as a whole. So, thank you again for being here tonight. This will be online for, for your family to see, and for who you want to show it to. It lives on forever. So, thank you so much. I hope you learned a lot. If you have any questions, please let us know. Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Cindy, and thank you to everyone who joined us tonight, both who is employed by the city, or as our residents who took the time out of their evening to come and join us and learn more about how their city functions and what's on tap for the coming year. So, with that, I will say thank you for joining us as well. And again, you can keep tabs with all the activities happening in the City of Richland, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube. The Communications Office does a wonderful job of producing those programs that you see on the city's channel, in addition to making sure that the council meetings are televised live. So, there's a lot of great transparency available, a lot of great information available that they put together throughout the year. So, take advantage of those social media channels to learn more about your city. With that, thank you for joining us, and have a great evening.